We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and just all.
All right, we'll move into the first township fire board meeting of the year at 7:01.
Yes, township members, you should have received the agenda packet. So hopefully you have that with you. The first item to look at are the minutes from our October 15th meeting.
Has everybody reviewed the minutes? Are they satisfied with them?
At this point, order, you can take a roll of the documents before you vote.
You can definitely do that.
Yeah, can.
You start. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the second item here, we have the run report. Sorry, I can't display it. Oh, we had a total of 226 calls for 2024. That averaged about 19 a month. Uh, Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, that run makes it pretty close the last couple of years. We have two more articles and a few last writers, which also could be, uh, hold on one minute.
Mike, do you have an update on officers and chiefs for that?
All our officers are staying the same as they were last year.
Okay.
Motion for the approval of the list. Counsel.
All of the officers?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, uh, 2025 officer list. All in favor?
All right, the fourth item is the budget report. Just want to point out that the auditors were here in December for a little bit. They're going to be here next week. We should have the final audit, I would say, in the next couple, three months. Right now, what we're looking at, unaudited, is that there is about 20, it's about 20, 21,000 extra revenues than there were expenses this year. Uh, we talked about this at a previous meeting. The council would like to, once we have the final audit numbers in place, if you would like to transfer that money to the equipment fund.
Is everyone? Have any input on that?
Well, maybe out of that step, then we'll sort of, if they're with us, you know, this extra money, if we do have extra money, it should go against this equipment fund.
Yep, and that's where we're.
That's what our position is.
And that's exactly what we're proposing. Soon as we get to final numbers, we'll transfer the exact money left over into the equipment fund.
When do we cap that fund?
Um, well, there's a schedule for equipment, whenever we are purchasing new equipment.
So, I understand that this, you know, loan that we took out for the pump truck.
Yep.
You know, kind of snuck up on us and, uh, and maybe had not been prepared for that financially. But, you know, when we are looking at 140,000 in that capital reserve budget, you know, it might be helpful to the fireboard if we have some kind of a projection on where we anticipate that money's going to go, something that we can put our arms around and read, you know, so I mean, if we have a schedule that says, okay, we're, we're going to get another truck 2027, et cetera. So we kind of know where it's going, because we kind of got blindsided, you know, with that 60 grand.
We weren't anticipating the pumper being the price that it was. The price jumped so much since the last one that we bought. But no, I don't see a reason that we can't share our.
We have that, I have that spreadsheet all of those projected dates.
We'd be really simple to get it to you.
Projected needs to be put into the, the, the pledge fund to stay on schedule.
Of, of that $20,000, though, I believe that would be split between, uh, the regular fund and the rural fire fund, uh, because they've, they fund different vehicles.
That makes sense. You know, it shouldn't be that same distribution with which we pay, you know, 25% distributed on the township, 75% from the city, and so when there's excess, 25% of that shit goes into the rural fire fund and 25 or the 75%.
We, we have two separate funds set up for the purchase of buying equipment, and I believe that's the way.
That rural fund was originally set up for billable, we build rural town just to have, and that money is quite quickly going into that fund. Well, it's how it was originally set up.
But that's, that's where we got the money for the last grass truck or pickup.
It is because we had the money there.
Yeah.
And, and any money spent out of that setup that has that, that's why you're more approval out of that fund? Because that was basically money came in from services provided in the townships.
Yep.
I was in the near seat when we formed that, uh, years ago.
Yep.
That's how that was, how it's set up originally. And, uh, city buys all, they have to buy the own equipment, they own the own equipment per contract, and then charges for the service coverage. And that's not, I know that's not all fire departments work, but that's how we waste time.
But, you know, just as a point of reference, you did use the rural fire fund money to buy that truck.
We did, yep.
So, you know, we can't sit here and say we just use it for services, when no, when we are actually buying equipment with it. And I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't speak for all the other township numbers here, but I don't think we have an issue with that. We, we want the fire department to have the equipment, they need to do the job, we want that fire department to be funded adequately, and, and we applaud the job that the fire department's doing, staying under by the, we're, we're just asking for that transparency and that accountability and that, that, so whatever excess is left because of the good job they're doing, not spending it all, we just want our percentage to go into that dedicated rural fire fund.
Okay. Is that going to be an accounting issue? No? I don't see any problem with that. And as far as the schedule, Mike will get it to you. As far as what we're going to replace, when we're going to replace it.
Yeah, that'd be great, you know, then, then we kind of feel like we know what's coming.
The list is constantly updating, but he has a list.
The three biggest things that, big ticket item, we had a pair of hikes coming up there. Expensive, um, their current water, off 10 grand a piece, nine to 10 grand a piece, they have 13 of them. Their compressor development is only also in, uh, other areas, and the ladies are currently with that right here in this year, but over the big, um, big thing I have.
Is there a way you could just email that list to him or get it?
I don't think they're.
Can, yep.
Currently over putting into the, um, the, with the, I guess, they can set up for a 6% increase of, uh, it's going to be a little higher, too. Things seem to jump a lot sometimes in that, uh, all safety equipment, trucks and all that, it's seen in the past, and here with your, uh, stuff. But then also, you're trying to balance to, what, each employee, each year, we have so, currently we are track, uh, we are tracked for a lot of this.
Any other questions on the unaudited numbers?
I have no further questions.
I think I got it, you're, oh, I probably can't print either. The next two items on there are just the current balances. I assume everybody can see that. There's not, not lots to talk about there. They will change.
Yeah.
When we get our final numbers. They'll be put into the two funds accordingly, as we just discussed. And we have the agreements. I actually have a couple of them already back to me.
Yeah, we had just, we were talking about this last month. Um, in the township contracts that we have, there's a statement that says the meetings of the board will be held during the first council meeting of the months of July and January. We've just noticed the last handful of years, February meetings are a little, a little better because we have more knowledge of our numbers. So in our contract, should we say the meetings of the, shall be held at least two times a year, and we can agree to when that works out that year? How should we, I'm just looking for suggestions.
This is where we ran into you showing up last month and, right. So we're trying to head that off for next time.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, if February is one of the worst, let's make it February.
Well, February is better because we have more numbers back. Okay?
Yeah, I, I mean, twice a year, that's great. Calling it out in the contract, those dates are going to be, you know, that's, that's just helpful because supervisors come and supervisors go.
Yep.
And so that means we know what to expect.
Okay, then do we want to put first council meeting in February and the first one in July?
That works.
That's before we get too deep into our budget stuff and.
Yep.
So basically, we're going to change the order from January to February, and it'll be the first meeting of the month, which will be the second Monday.
Yep.
Nope. We have to have another one, call, have a special one, we can certainly do that. All right. Any other business on the fireboard?
I just, I apologize, I haven't had time to read this and digest it thoroughly before I do. Do we have, if memorialized in here, that the 7525 of surplus is going to be designated to those two specific funds?
Well, we will now because it's into 19 minutes. So is it in here right now? No, because that was just decided moments ago.
As long as, as long as we get that language in there, we're golden.
Okay.
One more thing, I'll just throw out there before we get done with the fireboard. I gave Mike some of my business cards. I'm, uh, Minnesota licensed hearing instrument specialist. I transferred back down here from Burnsville, I'm back in McHale now at the hearing life point there. And so for fire department workers, police department, city employees, I believe currently you're aiming to have annual hearing testing accomplished so you can maintain a record and that sort of thing. And, uh, my office will be happy to provide that free of charge as long as it's lined up in advance. And actually, I gave, I gave you like 10 cards there. We got a little program where if they call my office ahead of time, say that they're connected with the city, they got the share card from me, we'll, we'll give the individual a $20 virtual gift card for coming in and getting tested, and we're not going to bill the city or the fire department for services. So that'll help you with your budget a little bit. We're, we're looking to help you.
Wonderful, we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Ivan was just pointing out to me here, it is in the contract, the 7525 is in there. V section 12, is a V, is that a five or a, is that a, is that 12 or is that seven?
Seven.
Seven, stupid Roman numeral, just use the numbers. Section seven. Thank you, Ivan. All right. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 717, we will adjourn the fire meeting.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, so now this Roman numeral is four.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, well, can't use numbers. All right, Roman numeral four is going to be our public hearing on the sale of cannabis within city limits.
Yes, uh, city attorney Jason Moran is here tonight. He will help present with our public hearing. We have met quite a few times the last two years, couple, three years, yeah.
Yep, it's been going on for quite a while. You going to be the CNF?
Yep.
All right, for your consideration here tonight, essentially several ordinances. We'll start right at the beginning. We've got ordinance 117 that basically, this is what I'm going to call is your general cannabis ordinance, just like you have a general alcohol ordinance, you would have a general cannabis ordinance. The big thing to take away from, uh, your general cannabis ordinance is, is that you're essentially adopting all of state law, similar with alcohol, anytime the alcohol law changes, yours changes. On the cannabis law, anytime the state law changes, yours will change. So that's one big thing to take into consideration. The other thing is, you don't have a whole lot of say with regard to this cannabis, and I know I've said that several different times, but it truly is that the state is going to regulate the majority of, of the cannabis stuff. What you do have say on is you do have say on hours of operation and zoning. And so really at page nine, that's when your regulations would come in, into play. Planning and zoning met, they did discuss hours of operation and some radius restrictions. Basically, what they have recommended is that, um, no cannabis business would be located within 200 feet, 250 feet of any school or any licensed daycare, residential treatment facility or an attraction that's likely to draw kids, basically public parks, playgrounds, athletic fields. You can go higher than that, you can go all the way up to 1,500 feet, but frankly, if we went up to 1,500 feet.
That would eliminate the city.
It would eliminate 90% of Janesville. Planning and zoning felt that 250 feet was appropriate. And many of my other cities are doing that. So what you would have to weigh here tonight is what type of radius restriction would you want, if any, somewhere between, you know, zero and 1,500 feet, I suppose. The other thing that cities are doing is they're regulating the hours of operation, and every city treats this differently. Basically, on page nine, what I have got for you is cannabis businesses will not sell cannabis between 2:00 AM and 8:00 AM. Now, some cities are being more restrictive, some cities are treating the high potency, which is your adult cannabis use, differently than the low potency beverage stuff that is typically found at convenience stores or bars and restaurants. Some cities are taking the position that the high potency stuff you should end earlier in the evening. For instance, 9:00 PM, what I've got here, a proposed 9:00 PM, 9:00 AM, between 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM overnight hours, wouldn't be any high potency stuff sold. But the low potency stuff at the bars would be 2:00 AM to 8:00 AM. Again, it's your town, whatever you guys choose to do on that, but, you know, you do have that option to treat the high potency and the low potency different. Some cities are saying, well, the low potency, we're just going to make it bar hours, which is the 2:00 AM to 8:00 AM. And then again, a lot of cities are saying the high potency stuff, they don't want people coming into town midnight, buying the high potency. Some cities have backed that down to 9:00 PM, 10:00 PM. Um, I did also put some language in here about cannabis can't be sold from any food trucks, motor vehicles, recreational vehicles or stands, can only be sold from a brick and mortar permanent structure. Most cities are going that route. And then they have to comply with zoning ordinances. I do have a proposed caps on licenses, the state is saying, we believe the state is saying, at least right now, it appears that you guys can put caps on licenses. We discussed, uh, some of this was discussed in, uh, in planning and zoning, and essentially we have a cap of one for the major dispensary, the high potency stuff, and six for the low potency stuff, again, your convenience stores and your bars, and we felt that six was probably the, the level of interest that would be in play right now. Certainly, if we got to the point where we're almost reaching that cap, you know, we would probably revisit that, and then you guys would decide whether you want to allow more in, but we would at least start out with a cap right now. Can charge a fee, uh, the initial fee, $500, renewals, $1,000, that comes right out of state statute. So that's the general cannabis ordinance, and does also give the power to law enforcement to do, uh, compliance checks, just like they do with alcohol. So keep that in mind.
Um, letter G?
Yes, letter G.
Home occupation?
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, I've heard a couple of questions about allowing this in residential zoned districts. If you look at letter G on page nine, it says no products, low potency or adult products shall be sold in any residential zoning district, and the sale of such does not qualify as a home occupation.
Yeah, that, that is in there as well. And then turning our attention to those zoning regulations, as Clinton just said, we're not going to allow, you know, the intent from planning and zoning would, was a recommendation to you guys not to allow sales in residential areas. Essentially, we've got proposed ordinances for the B1, B2, and B3 district. Essentially, this is where your, uh, bars and restaurants would be, convenience stores, bowling alley is, is, uh, is also included in those business districts. Low potency, again, beverage stuff would be allowed to be sold as an accessory to retail sales. So essentially, and it's a permitted use, it wouldn't, we wouldn't require a conditional use permit, but essentially what that does is it allows the convenience stores to sell the small low potency edibles that are legal and have been legal for quite a while. And then, uh, the bars and bowling alley, the opportunity to sell some of the beverage stuff. But again, as an accessory to retail sales, it couldn't be a primary sale. And then in the M district, which is your, that's, that's essentially where we would, we would put the, uh, the high potency dispensary. You do have to allow at least one, and this accomplishes and meets state law in that requirement. So planning and zoning felt that it would be best suited in the M1 district. Like Clinton said, um, we do not have an option at this time for residential district. I mean, you could certainly do that if you wanted to. Most cities are taking the position that they don't want that in residential districts just because of some of the traffic that it could generate, extra deliveries from Amazon, from products and manufacturers, uh, and, and the potential for odors. And the general consensus amongst cities has been to, uh, keep this stuff in, uh, in the business district. Those are the ordinances in, in a nutshell. Keep in mind that this is new, um, I don't anticipate the state issuing the licenses at least until summer, fall of this year, I've even heard now, not even until 2026. So who knows what will happen? But you guys are a little ahead of the curve by getting these on the books, you've got them in place, so that when the state does start to issue licenses, you guys are ready. Does anyone have any questions on all that? It's a lot of, a lot of material, it's a lot of stuff, but planning and zoning didn't meet, and they recommend these.
I don't know, I mean, question specifically to that, which is, if, um, probably, can we give our opinion after you're done?
Yes. Yes.
Yep, this is tonight's public hearing, and that's a public hearing, it's just that, it's the opportunity for the public to be counted, either in favor or against.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone have any questions for me on this?
I was going to ask you, because we had talked about 500 feet, but now we've dropped it to 250, but then you put in here the residential area, so I'm guessing that's why.
Uh, the thought, the thought was even 500 was a little restrictive, that if we went 500, it's still taking out quite a bit of, uh, real estate in Janesville, and 250 feet would be a little more appropriate. And then again, we did, uh, planning and zoning decided that we did not want to allow it as a home occupation in the residential district. So residential district's completely off limits.
At 250 feet, your target may be three to five blocks or homes. That's not a big distance from a school or a playground, and that's what I am thinking.
Sure.
500 would be more appropriate, even if it does take some.
Sure. Correct. Yep, it's, it's your town, you know, this is, uh, this is your regulation, certainly you can go as high as 1,500. Even at 1,500, there was available real estate, it was just very little. And so by dialing that back from 1,500, it opened up some more, but you are correct, 250 feet, that's two blocks.
Less than two blocks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know.
I don't, I don't have a problem making it restrictive for our community, because 15 miles down the road, they're going to be able to do whatever they want.
Correct. Correct.
Most of them work there and buy most of their products there already.
Correct.
I just don't want it in the residential area.
And I live very, very close to this issue, and I don't want any.
Then we need to look at 500, or 750, or 1,000.
See, we did go to the upper limit, uh, 1,500.
1,500.
You said there's very little real estate, that's potentially flooding into the state saying that we have to at least offer one.
Correct.
Dispensary, so wouldn't that kind of just us be making the decision whether we had a dispensary, because probably a lot of people aren't going to want to go, we're telling them, hey, you can only go over there.
Yeah. Even, even if you guys went with 1,500, there is, there is area in town for it. That's even at the 1,500.
My only issue is, you know, in one meeting, two days from now, we're trying to promote growth in this town.
Right.
For business and everything else, and now are we going to sit here two days before restricted? That's, that's where I have issues.
It's a balance.
Believe it or not, it's legitimate business. That's the way it's going to go.
Correct.
I just want clarification on everybody. Tell them that, give us a word.
I believe we have a question.
I believe we have a question.
I'd like to know, you know, especially at home, but like, within the state, like statutes of state, it's not like you can set schools, like, option, you know, from the school, or daycare, but obviously, like, that's, like, that's always, well, you were going to, um, be in the school, or do you recommend, like, instead of that, you can just, like, express.
Right.
Can I get your name so we can get it in the minutes? And yours, if anyone knows it, just to have it in the minutes?
Lauren Hester.
I'm thinking.
I don't know, like, it's, if, I don't, I've been to a party, I don't really, but I don't need to have her. Like, we don't have any that currently in town, that's like, had one of these business, and like, they're not putting down, like, we don't have to do that.
Correct.
Or like, I had a, a.
Correct. Correct. The state, the state isn't even ready to start issuing licenses and probably won't until summer or fall of this year. And I have even heard that it won't be ready until early 2026. Now, a year ago, you know, they were supposed to have already been issuing licenses, but it seems like every three or four months, the state comes out with a new projection that they're still not up to running. They don't have a director, they don't have the employees. So, you know, the state's not anywhere near or ready to issue licenses.
I think if someone wanted it, they would be here. Would that happen?
We would hope so.
Yep.
We would hope so. Yeah. Yeah. So, planning and zoning talked about 250. We've heard some public comment tonight, it sounds like, and we've had some council discussion, it sounds like, you know, maybe we want to look at increasing that. And so what you guys then have to grapple with is, is that magic number 500? Is it 1,000? What it is, it really depends on your comfort level.
And earlier?
I have a question on that footage from the school. We do not understand correctly if you roll much more than 250 feet for the beverage side of that, if it's a current business.
We're not selling it right now?
I know, but that has potential to sell it.
I know. When it comes time to vote on this, I will not be voting.
It, what do you?
Yes.
It's right, it's under, um, like, either.
Yeah. It's under 500.
I just, and the bowling alley has got to be about 200 feet from school.
Yep. It's close. Ron?
I'm just thinking, you know, you have, you got about two places for the stop sign to the school, so, and the alcohol. You go to that 15 and a pitch, then it's beyond, probably stopped itself.
If we go any less than 500 feet, we're going to be on that total waste out.
Right. So you try to most business soon.
I, I know.
So is there a way to, like, so they can? Is there a way to have it be where, like, not restrictive, like, where, like, current business that are currently established would be able to, like, become, like, the fact that we hold up here for that long?
Grandfathering, I think she's referring to.
I, I don't think we could do that.
Or, is there a way, for, like, if the bowling alley were to sell it, but not be able to, like, there's, um, to have it, and that's how we control it with the cap, right?
To some extent, yes.
Is there a way so that the distances up on the low use versus the low dosage stuff, so that bars and still sell the low beverage, and then not, not have an impact where we put the dispensary?
It's possible that we could do that. You know, I would be willing to give that a try, if that's how the council wanted to go.
I would be heard as residential members, or at least for that.
Sure. Where you would, you would want the high potency, maybe the 1,000 feet, and the low potency?
The 250.
The 250.
Yeah.
I think I, you can climb a step off that, just, or, or, that probably still would matter. Three hundred, what's the city block? I believe the city block.
If you're paying, do we discuss, the distance starting at school?
It says in, in.
You go to something to the school, but, no, there's a bowling alley, you might be only the 150.
In the ordinance, it says the closest points.
Correct.
So then what, and you're just gonna probably only 150?
Can we go that far?
Yes.
Okay. Is this something the planning and zoning wants to look at again, or we're deciding here or not?
It may not be a bad idea to send it back, actually. We've got.
If he could separate it, I think a lot more people would be.
Sure.
Is that something of variance? Or is that just open to my camera?
It would not be, we would not be able to do a variance.
We'll just set it accordingly.
It's going to have to be a firm, firm number.
Lauren?
Are you allowing separate, because the part that truly bothers me was the, like, things factor. Like, I don't want, like.
That's what we're looking at doing now, is separating out the dispensary from the low, low potency sales.
I think manufacturing, for that high potency, and all that stuff, that should be through the cell, but yeah, just that beverage, low dose, that can be.
I don't have a problem doing that, because we don't currently have a dispensary here. I have a little bit of a problem handcuffing some of our businesses that are already here.
Yes.
It would be likely to sell it, and all of a sudden, you can't.
It's more acceptable, I think, if you don't invest in that high potency.
Yeah. Honestly, the low potency isn't any different beverage alcohol.
Right.
Right.
It typically doesn't have an odor. In the low potency, I see no problem going lower. But then on the, the other side of the dime, you know, there are some people that's just against it. So, you know, it, that's why you guys get the big bucks on this.
On the personal side, I'm 100% against it. There's no question about it, but still got to do what's right for the entire city.
Well, and it's legal.
It is legal.
So to some extent, the state has already set the bar for us. We have to allow at least one.
Yep. And there's nothing that says we even get one, but.
On the low potency, do we want to set any distance?
Take it back to the planning and zoning, I guess, and.
See what they say?
Let them bring something back to us, yes.
I, I'm, oh, I agree with pretty much everything, the low dosage and all that. I think you got to have some type of distance. You just mentioned something about, you know, I think you have to have something, even if it's 150 feet or, you know, like, whatever the bowling alley is, you know, I have no problem with that, but I think you have to have some type of distance, and like, to use that.
But you can, like, set up one part of the business.
There is no mobile. We did, that is in there, Mike.
You can either distance to this point, then, you know, either M or B, if you like.
Business districts?
Business district and manufacturing is all you can have it in, and so it can't be sold in residential.
We already are eliminating it from residential.
Yeah. But what's the bowling alley considered?
We could take, we could take, we could take the feet away on the low potency, and essentially, it would be a zero, with the understanding that it's only, the low is only sold in the business district.
Right. B1, B2, and B3.
Yeah.
Which is what we have now.
Correct. Correct.
Where does that end, or, where does that go? I'm not sure where that goes.
Bowling alley's B2. No. Typically, we could bring one up on the screen, but we are having some problems with the screen.
Not tonight, anyway.
Basically, it would go from the bowling alley to Casey's, and then goes as far down as, how far down, 14?
About 12, roughly, both places.
Okay, so past about clinic.
So it sounds like we want to send it back to planning and zoning?
Yeah. I think so.
Have them do some measurements, and maybe that is 150 feet. I don't know. But we should at least look into it. High potency, I'm hearing that you guys want the maximum.
I'm fine with that, because we don't have one here now. If we go and start trying to handcuff the bowling alley or the.
Sure.
Purple Goose or my liquor store, I don't want some agree with that.
Keep in mind that even with the maximum distance, the dispensary still couldn't operate in the business district.
No, it's only industrial.
It's only in the industrial.
Right.
So that somebody can go around a old clinic and try to, the dispensary, could be worked?
No.
Correct.
She answered the old, though.
Kid's daughter from the school.
Okay.
That's my own.
No, they could not do that.
No, it has to be the manufacturing district.
So, as we're talking about the distances stuff, this is in point, to a point, I guess. Do you see what you're doing?
It would not.
We have a separate ordinance.
Okay.
Of use.
And.
I mean, I know you put privacy or, or, and that.
Correct, and even to some extent, in, in the yard, you're going to smell it.
And that was, that was really what I was getting at, was, we have great neighbors, I mean, I have, but my daughters run into this public city, of course, where she has little kids, the neighbor was always upset, smoking.
Well, you can't, state law is, you can't smoke in a apartment complex, multifamily apartment complex. And then we all, we passed this several years ago.
That's long, a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago, no public consumption, so, presence out on the sidewalk, down at the beach, at the park.
Parking lot.
At the, at the community celebration, you know, you can't be using those places. Now, the state has told us that the maximum penalty that you can impose, that you must command, is relatively light, but it's a, unfortunately, can't issue 10 of them at once. Yes. No more than $300.
Basically.
But yes, we do have that on the books.
So is the council on grants, we'll send it back to planning and zoning, get a few things tweaked, and then maybe bring it back to us?
So, the motion should be to table these ordinances, and to continue this public hearing, I would say, to the next city council meeting. We want to go two months.
Well, yeah. When is planning and zoning going to meet again?
February 26th, and then the council's March 10th.
That'll be okay.
March 10th.
I will make that motion.
7:00 p.m.
I will second Ivan's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions on it?
I have none.
We probably should just call for a public comment, as a matter of fact, if there's any public comment.
Is there any more public comment on this?
Yeah, I think I do very well, if you have a comment, you can.
Okay, well, that's, that's what we're going to have the planning and zoning look at. Any other public comment? Ron?
When was that meeting, the 26th, okay, what?
That will be the planning and zoning.
What time?
3:00 p.m. 3:00 o'clock. Wednesday, the 26th. Anyone else?
And we might also, sort of, the green card, we're saying, you want?
He.
I'm telling you right now.
Yeah, he's our attorney. He says no.
We don't have a attorney.
No. No, we can't.
I'll leave that.
So I do, I do, I don't want to interfere with her, but.
I hear you.
That's what we're looking at doing with this change. It's close. That's it?
Close the hearing, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the hearing at 7:45, and we're going to move on to the rest of our council meeting.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to have a, it's good to visit.
All right. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Motion approved. Agenda.
All in favor? Consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda tonight, we have our minutes from our last council meeting, January 13th, and then you're going to have, because council receivable, and then we have three sets of invoices that we've paid since our last meeting. One of them is a small list of bills that we were able to code back to 2024. Your second set of payables would be from the January 27th time period, and then your third set would be for tonight's meeting. Really, as far as this time of the year and everything, everything is really routine and standard. Just wanted to point out that we, you do see the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, we did have some annual insurance premiums due, so we sent those out actually on January 27th. Sarah, Joe, do you have anything?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Anyone here to speak to public forum?
Good evening. My name is Robert Burns. My address is 36994 73rd Street in Janesville. I'm here tonight to discuss with the council about perhaps opportunities to spend some money with our current engineer to look at the feasibility of developing the property just south of the city garage. We own that lot right next to where my family does, and we've been approached now for, the fourth time in the last approximately, well, pretty much since the administration change, of businesses that want to buy from us, or buy that lot and develop. One of the businesses will be, would be employing 16 people, and the other would be 22, and the other would be retail. That area is Sean Mulcahy's property at this time. I know he's paying the taxes as an industrial zone, if I'm not mistaken. But I'm just here tonight as a citizen, hoping that we can be competitive and give opportunities to, for our community to grow. And that's why I just want to address. But I guess more than anything is, I was hoping that the council would take a look at, I guess, spending taxpayer money is the best word for it, for future growth in that area, so.
Typically, something like this would fall to a developer, but I do have to agree with Bob on this, that I just sat here a minute ago and said how we're trying to promote growth in our town, and that is the direction we're looking at moving. I personally think it would be worth it to conversation with Volton, making at least getting a small cost analysis on it, and then we could bring it back to us once we have somewhat of an estimate on what that would cost us.
Yeah, I know Joe has done a good job in talking about, perhaps we'd need a lift pump, but as, just a conversation as far as what opportunities might be there with impervious surfaces and so on, and plus what the county and state would allow for the grading of the property, because it's rolling ground to the west there. And also, I think the retention pond behind Casey's would need to be changed, because it looks like the street where that stops, the barricade is, where the tar ends, the way that's designed, it appears as though any overflow would go right where the new road would perhaps go in, if I'm looking at that. But I'm not an engineer.
That's what we got them for.
Yeah, but I sure like to see that if we could, as I, someone else will get that, those businesses if we don't, and.
Right.
And it'd be great, but thanks, everyone, for your time.
I would like to comment on this. Bob, I've been working too with trying to do something out there. I know the county, the city, and Sean have talked to multiple people in the last year, and it'd be really hard for the city to go out there and build the streets, not knowing what size of business wants to come in. How do we plan for a lotage on a business we don't know what it is?
Oh, I certainly understand that, Ivan, that's a good comment. I think at this time, there's state and state, city, county, city standards as to how that infrastructure would be put in. I think at this time, there's state and, uh, state, city, county, city standards as to how that infrastructure would be put in as far as sizing, uh, for not only that expansion, but future expansion. I would assume that's how the city has written up the, uh, opportunities for that. And of course, the size of the lift pumps, uh, that would have to be put in there. And also, uh, what types of lot footage there could be, how much impervious surface would be allowed to go into that lift pump. And also, I'm assuming Excel Energy serves that area?
Um, we at Janesville Utility Zones, utility rights out there.
They do at this time, so there'd be no deregulation with Excel Energy, that, okay? Okay. But those are the things, it's not that, that the city goes out and puts in curb and gutters and, uh, uh, tar streets and, and water and that. Would be along the lines of what would.
What is needed.
What is needed to do it.
What is needed, and then the developer comes forth. I, I would never recommend, well, it'd be nice if the city did, but I would never, ever think the city should come in there and, uh, start throwing taxpayer money to put something in where there's absolutely no, no type of, uh, plan in place how the city be compensated. But the city does have requirements, and that's where I was hoping that there would be money allotted to come with the, uh, those requirements and the feasibility, what it would take. So, that's what that purpose is, but, anyway, thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Glad you want to strike up a conversation with Jason on it? Yep.
Paul is here.
Yep, public forum, Paul?
My name is Paul Vogus. I live at one oh two East Grove Street here in Janesville, and this is just a really brief, uh, update on the songs in the park. Um, there's not a lot to cover, other than it's moving forward, things are going well, everything's settling in. Um, I applied for three grants this year, got two of them so far, the other one I'm just waiting to hear, I just haven't heard yet from it. Um, the only change, well, there are a couple of changes I'm making this year. Uh, I'm, I've got it scheduled to do it every two weeks instead of once a month, with the exception of June, because heydays falls in there. So, um, I'm hoping to do better promotion this year. Uh, we'll go with, um, different things in the newspaper and hopefully, there's radio stations that put these on for no charge and things like that, better poster coverage, things like that. If anybody has any suggestions on that, please let me know because that's my downfall right there, I'm not real good at it. So if anybody has any suggestions, let me know. And I also want to bring back the Janesville night out this year. Um, and I don't know really much about that, other than I've been told to speak to Officer Johnson, Chief Johnson. And we'll go from there, kind of try and figure it out from there, uh, problem, I'm thinking in August, but I don't.
What is it, typically the third?
The third Sunday in August? It's in August.
There's a typical day when all cities.
Okay, okay, yeah.
For national night out, yeah.
Oh, is that, okay, I'm, I'm, I'll see what I can work out. I'm kind of hoping to do it on one of the Thursday nights, but if not, we can, we can talk about, we can work around that, put it that way. But I would like to bring it back and tie it in with.
That's terrific.
Yeah, tie it in with the rest of the stuff, so it's really all I got, unless anybody has any questions about it. Um, and if anybody has any questions that they don't think of now, you can get my phone number from the city office and call me and, or my email or whatever, let me know, so. Otherwise, that's all I got, so.
National night out is the first Tuesday.
The first Tuesday, okay. So maybe we could do it, though, I don't know, but we'll see what we can work out there. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to get together and, and talk about it and, uh, even if it's not that day, um, maybe we can work it on a different. Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, we'll work it out, okay, I'll, I'll get with you as the time. So, all right, very good, unless there's any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you again for doing this here and working on this. A lot of people were happy with it last year.
Yeah, we've enjoyed it, we hope to do it better this year, which was the plan all along. Start out last year, figure out what we can do, what we can't do, what works, what doesn't, and kind of move ahead, and that's kind of what we're doing this year, so.
Yep.
So, all right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public forum? Public forum. Moving on. Notice and communications.
Yeah, you have some material from the league of Minnesota cities, I put that at your table here before the meeting started, that's all I have.
Tell to reports?
I have none currently.
I don't need it.
Yeah, do you?
I'm not doing one, yes, but, um, the park board met on Monday the twenty-seventh. We had talked a little bit about musical park series, um, maybe partnering with community ed to get some booths going, um, we'll look into that. Excuse me. We, uh, talked about getting new benches for the park, how many to get, potentially four inch that pads under all of them, so the positioning. That was going to be looked into for prices and, um, potential, uh, connectivity. Uh, and then there was a, uh, a park, I think it was a naming park over here on the southeast side of town, there's a lot right next to it. We were talking to the owner about potentially buy, having council buy that or city buy it, just so that we could do something with it. And gave advice to bring it up. That was all the park really had.
I know there was a resident that, uh, talk to me about the beautification committee kind of teaming up with maybe some of the park stuff. That might be coming up next.
That might be coming up, I have, you didn't get touched on that, Ivan?
I don't think that southeast park is the name, done by us.
Eastwood.
Eastwood.
Eastwood Park.
It was just, instead of letting it, some, to not be used, the city could find use for it, or at least we have it, if we had to, we could flip it back if we need for, without profit.
And this is looking, is something we're looking at, do we have a park budget, or?
They were, yeah, um, or council approval, um, they were hoping to get her, brother her, wasn't it? Um, and gonna make an offer, potential offer.
Don't say the number.
Potential offer.
Yep.
Thank you, Clinton. I think I should have gone to a meeting over the weekend about this. Um, the planning commission had met on twenty-second, uh, we talked.